Okay, thank you.
Call this meeting back to order. We're on action item three. The, uh, it's no longer effectively going to be approval, but discussion of proposed third interim report on the fourteen fifteen budget. Dr. Rubio, you want to introduce the item?
Sure, thank you. Good evening again. Whoops, my, oh. Good evening. Oh.
Good evening again. The purpose of this item is to present the third interim report by Dorasue. Dorasue, thank you very much.
Can you make it a full screen, Ms. Tamari?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight to present the third interim. Lisa, can I have the full page? I don't want to do it line by line. Sorry. I, I want to show the whole page, not going by line by line.
Dorasue, I don't think you'll be able to, because you're using a PowerPoint template. Just tap real fast on the arrow.
Oh, I, I know. You will?
Just, just keep tapping, and it'll, the full page will fill out.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we are here tonight to evaluate the district financial condition, and in this case, we're not going to approve the third interim. And then the budget goals, uh, we're trying to maintain a balanced budget for the fourteen fifteen fiscal year, and we will be using deferred interim to help guide the budget development for the fiscal year fifteen sixteen. Financial considerations, we need to develop a plan to deal with the district ongoing structural deficit. And what we've been doing for the, uh, so many years, we've been using the one-time funding in the ending fund balance to use to balance the budget. We have to stop eliminate the reliance of the one-time funds in the ending fund balance used to balance the budget. Unless we can eliminate the structural deficit, I'm recommending we should now beginning to increase the reserve toward the target of eight to ten percent. Right now, we are doing it at a four percent minimum required level, and then we should continue to closely monitor the enrollment, the ADA, and also the state budget that could impact the district finances. And just to let you guys know, deferred interim does not include may revise. Let's look at the income side. On the LCFF, we have a total of five point seven million. Federal income, three hundred and seven thousand. Other state income, three hundred and ninety-six thousand. Local income, two point nine million, and SALPA transferring, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, for a total of nine point six million dollar.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
So, how'd we lose a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the SALPA?
Uh, we will touch on that on another screen when we look at the, uh, the details.
Okay, so, but I'm accurate on that from the last time?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
We will be seeing additional contribution of over a hundred thousand on the SALPA. Yes. Okay, now expenditures. The certificated salaries, a total of four point three million dollar. Classified salary, one million dollar. Employee benefits, two point one million dollar. Books and supplies, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Contract services, one point eight million. Capital only, ninety thousand. Indirect costs, uh, negative twenty-nine thousand dollars, for a total expenditure of nine point seven million dollars. So, if you go the total where you minus your total expenses, you will have a negative of fifty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, go back to the screen, it said expenditures. Oh, you want me to do it?
Keep going. Back one more, I think.
Yeah. Okay, you see, we have a total expenditure of nine point seven million dollar. If you use the total where you minus your total expenditures, the difference is negative fifty-eight thousand dollars. Then you add on the transfer out of one point three million dollars, then the net increase in the fund balance is one, negative one point four million dollar.
So, again, this is different from the last time. You showed it by a five hundred thousand dollars, so that's going to be explained later on as well?
That's right.
Okay.
Last time, you are correct. We, we have a contribution in the range of five hundred thousand.
Okay.
But this time, now the contribution becomes, uh, six hundred and fifty-four thousand.
I'm sorry, but I was looking at the expenditures last time. You presented this was, total expenditures were ten point two million?
Yes.
And now they're nine seven, so that's where I'm talking about the five hundred thousand.
And then we will cover the expenditures in detail later on, too.
Okay.
Yeah. And now, let's go to the next slide, the fund balance. Then what you have, uh, what you have from your net balance, you add it on to your beginning balance of the year, then the ending projected balance for fiscal year fourteen fifteen is two point three million dollars. And here on this slide, it listed the components of the ending balance, and I want to point your attention to the line, it said four hundred and forty-four thousand. That is the four percent minimum required reserve. So now, let's look and, uh, look at into the details of the income side, and it listed the changes from the second interim to, to the third interim right now. And just to let you know, third interim, the cutoff is April thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. So, LCFF, there is a slight increase, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. Uh, federal income, five thousand, five hundred and five dollars increase, but the local income, we have a decrease of a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So, the two hundred and twenty-one dollars has come from the special ed property tax transfer. And then the increase of the five thousand dollars for the federal money is spelled out in here, uh, it's come from mainly from special ed and also Title II. The local income, we have an increase of sixteen thousand dollars on the unrestricted portion, but there is a decrease of a hundred and forty-nine thousand on the restricted portion, and mainly of that one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars decrease is from the reduction of the SALPA transfer money from the special ed.
And can you explain what, why? Why such a big reduction between second and third interim?
Because what happened is, uh, we have kids that reside in Amberfield, but they were taken to another school district for, uh, services under special ed. And we call that in special ed, we call that, uh, appraisement out. So, we have, it's costly to send kids out to another school district to provide them special ed services, and this is the reason why these reduction was taken out from the SALPA entitlement.
And why didn't that show up in the second interim and the first interim, and why is it only showing up now?
The way that it was done by SALPA, and because of this time, I sat down with the SALPA director, and next year, in the fiscal year fifteen sixteen, I probably will be budget some kind of transfer out when I do the budget development. But the normal practice on, under the SALPA budget, they do not include in an out-appraisal when they send out the budget information, not until the P one. And the P one normally come in after the second interim.
So...
So, I had a discussion with her, and because of our school district financial situation, we do, I do require her to give me the numbers as soon as she knows. And she said, starting in next school year, she will do that.
Okay, so, when you're setting the budget last June, and we're approving it, you didn't know what this appraisement was going to be?
That's right, because...
And you didn't know, really, until just recently, you're saying?
Yeah. Normally, they would not know...
Even though that's for this year?
For this year.
Current year. It seems odd that we get notified so late in the year about a, for us, significant expense.
That's why I had, I, I set up a meeting with her to have that kind of discussion. So, for this year, what happened is, during the budget adoption for fourteen fifteen, and under her spreadsheet, there was no mention of in and out-appraisal. And the in and out-applause information will come in through the P one allocation. And this time, the P one allocation already, uh, it comes in after the second interim already have been done.
Okay, well, appreciate your efforts to try to get that information as soon as you can from them, and, and it does make sense to put some kind of placeholder in the budget during budget development.
That's right. And, and actually, for next year, fifteen sixteen, I probably will budget at the worst-case scenario, instead of putting the whole entire amount what they said on the spreadsheet, I will at least talk to Karen, our special ed director, have an understanding, the likelihood of getting a, uh, out-appraisal. Then in that case, I will at least put a number there, instead of overstating our SALPA transfer.
Okay?
Okay, so expenditures. After update, the expenditures are lower by five hundred and seventeen thousand, and here's the breakdown, oh, here's the breakdown for the five hundred and seventeen thousand. It makes up with an increase of fourteen thousand from the certificated salaries, a reduction of a hundred and ninety-four thousand from the classified salaries, and a reduction of one hundred and forty thousand from employee benefits, increase of books and surprise, thirty-nine thousand, contract and services, and, uh, a decrease of forty-one thousand, a decrease of a hundred and ninety-five thousand on the capital only. Indirect or direct support cost is an increase of fifty dollars, to make up the total reduction of five hundred and seventeen thousand on the expenditures. And you can see mostly on the classified salary and employee benefits, the reason for the decrease is in fourteen fifteen, we do have a, uh, one-time ability to put some of the custodian salary and benefit out of the general fund into the RDA, which is in Fund Twenty-Five. So, we made a journal entry, moving all these custodian salary and benefits out from the general fund, to move it to a separate fund, which is Fund Twenty-Five, and that is the reason why you're seeing a big reduction of the expenditure in the classified salary and the, and the employee benefits.
So, so, um, that's not the, um, the third column, the decrease, one ninety-four classified salaries and one forty thousand employee benefits. That's the custodial move?
Mostly because of this, uh, journal entry.
Okay, that's not the cuts that, that we were talking about in the last time?
No, it is not.
Because that's for next year, potentially.
This is strictly related to fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Right. And, and just to, to clarify the, for, for folks who might not know what the RDA fund is, that's redevelopment authority, I guess, agency funds.
Agency.
The school district gets some funds that came through the city redevelopment agency, and those are capital funds. Those are not to be used for operations in general, for construction, maintenance, or not maintenance, but, um, maybe deferred maintenance or big capital building things. However, LA Unified got some special legislative dispensation for, uh, at least this year that allows not just LA, but all districts, to use that RDA fund to fund custodial. So, for this, like, one-time shot, we get to take some of our capital and put it in operations.
Yeah. The RDA money is strictly used for the purposes of, uh, school facilities or construction. So now, let's look at the contributions. These are the programs that need the general fund support. For special ed, five hundred and thirty-three thousand. The ongoing maintenance is one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Emery F. Fund, nine thousand dollars. So, a total of six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. This slide shows you a summary, uh, version of the multi-year projection, but there is a, another detail on the multi-year projection that we attached to the board package. And on the multi-year projection, I would like to point out that in this case, in the year, fiscal year fifteen sixteen, the assumption was based on the cuts that we have on the seven FTE. Okay? So, in this case, these numbers will change. So, but then the fourteen fifteen fiscal year, we can look at it right now. Total income is nine point six million dollars, expenditures, eleven million dollar. So, the expenses are over the income by one point four million dollar. And part of the reason is a one-time transfer out of the RDA money from the general fund to Fund Twenty-Five, because again, the RDA money is strictly only for construction or facilities purposes. They should not be staying in general fund, because these are restricted money. So, I just want to point you out, the one point four million dollars negative right here, mostly is point to the, it's got to be, do with the one point one million dollars that taken out from the RDA money that taken out from the general fund to the twenty, Fund Twenty-Five. Then what you have at the end of the fiscal year fourteen fifteen, you, we projected a ending fund balance of two point three million dollars.
And Dorasue, just to make sure everyone's clear, so i- if this slide assumes, if the seven positions were eliminated, according to what you have there, we're still going to be overspending by eight hundred thousand dollars next year?
We are still, uh, on this slide, it shows you, we are still deficit spending all three years, period. And then in fif- fifteen sixteen, again, the projection, these numbers are based on the assumption that we are going to cut the seven classified positions. But at the same time, we are adding on two certificated position and two part-time yard supervision. That is the number based on.
So, we still have an ongoing structural deficit?
So, let me repeat. So, in fifteen sixteen, the assumptions that based on are the elimination of the seven classified position, but the additional of two certificated position, PE and music teachers. And also, we added on two classified part-time yard duties. And...
Part, part-time.
Yes, part-time. And also, a reduction of a hundred thousand in the operational budget to make into this number in fifteen sixteen. And sixteen seventeen, the assumption, there is a further ninety thousand reduction in the operational budget in sixteen seventeen. And most of them, it comes to, uh, it's, I'm projecting there would, there should be a savings in the repair budget when we move into the new facility in sixteen seventeen.
Yeah, I was at a, uh, facilities, sort of the future of California Facilities Funding Conference on Friday in Sacramento with a number of state officials, and that, that point was discussed, that, um, the more, you have newer facilities, the less you have to spend on maintenance and operations, uh, and take out of your, your operations budget, right? And it was sort of analyzing extent to which low-income and low-wealth districts disproportionately have to have older facilities, because they don't have the capital funding to build the new stuff, and they're spending more of their general operations on maintenance, instead of having the capital, which we're lucky to, um, the capital money to, to build the new facility, to reduce your maintenance cost. Anyway, it's a...
So, but then, um, again, all three years, they are still in deficit spending, even with these assumptions. So, it just, uh, repeat what I just said regarding the deficit spending. So now, the, the... So now, let's look at how much of the deficits, uh, how much of the structural deficit spending that we have in fourteen fifteen. So, if you go through all these calculations, the bottom line is, the bottom of this slide is at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That is our structural deficit spending for fiscal fourteen fifteen.
But that's with the ability to use the RDA money for custodial?
Yeah, that is based on the journal entry that we did to move the custodian salary to the, uh, RDA Fund Twenty-Five.
Does this include the cuts as well? Is this figure affected by that, or no?
I don't think so. This is fourteen fifteen.
But remember, the cuts not going to come in until fifteen sixteen.
I'm sorry.
So, this is based on what the current staffing we have, but then the only thing that I did is the journal entry that move all the custodian to Fund Twenty-Five.
I got it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, on a normal year, add three hundred and thirty thousand, basically, to the bottom line.
That will be the next page.
So, so we were overspending this year by about half a million still?
That's right.
Before you made that change?
So, now, let's look at the deficit spending in more detail, and that will cover part of the, um, the answer to part of your question. So now, the third interim, we are projecting a, a structural deficit of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. What happened if the custodian salary and benefits stay in the general fund, and we did not do that transfer to the RDA money? Then the deficit will be increased by another three hundred and sixty-four thousand to a total of five hundred and fifty-two thousand. So now, you probably will be asking, how many additional ADA that we need to cover the, uh, the deficit of the five hundred and fifty-two thousand? So, what I did is, I went into the FICMAC calculator and actually put in, if we, if we are going to get additional one hundred and twenty-five ADA for the high school students, and that will offset the five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars deficit. Or, another way you can do it is to get another one hundred and thirty-five ADA for the, uh, grade four to six, to come into the school district, in order to offset the five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So, just to let you know, different grade level, they do have, uh, different funding. So, the reason why I do the high school first, because they have the most highest, uh, funding for the high schoolers.
Dorasue, I mean, I, yeah, this slide confuses me just because, uh, it gives us about forty-four hundred dollars a student. Um, I did the math on your, um, you know, a hundred and thirty-two and a five hundred and fifty-two thou- we're getting twice that from the state per student. Uh, you know, we're getting eighty-one hundred, eighty-two hundred. So, uh, I guess I'm not trusting the FICMAC calculator on this one, or maybe it's that those, just the base dollars, and, you know, you're not calculating the, if those are, uh, unduplicated pupils under LCFF, in other words, they're not low-income or English learners, in which case, we're going to get twenty percent supplemental more and another concentration factor of fifty percent on top of that, so, um, I'm glad you did this analysis, because I asked you to do it, but it seems to, um, uh, I think we're getting more per pupil than forty-four hundred dollars.
Well, what I can do, I can look further into this, but then just to point out to you, uh, the, the way the funding actually go, it doesn't really go by, like, you have funding per ADA is eight thousand dollars. Then you have ten more ADA, then you just go eight thousand times ten. So, it doesn't work out that simple like that, so...
It's supposed to.
Well, but there's additional cost for each additional student, and so it takes that into account. So, we wouldn't close the gap, because we got a hundred and thirty-two new high school students, so we wouldn't be able to fit them in all the classes. We'd have to have higher, hire new teachers.
Yes.
And so, there's a cost per student.
Right, but actually, we do have space at the middle and the high school to add, you know...
The calculator doesn't know that.
Right, exactly, exactly. We could, we could put fifty, um, probably fifty at the middle school, we could probably put eighty at the high school, with no additional cost, because we've got classes sizes of twelve at the high school, and the calculator, so...
That's right.
So, maybe that's, maybe that's it, that the calculator's just assigning cost to our, to our revenues.
It could be a combination. It doesn't have to be saying all the increases come from the high school, or all the increases are coming out from the elementary school. It just gives you an idea. But then, another thing regarding the unduplicated count, obviously, if your ADA goes up, your enrollment goes up, and then your, your unduplicated count, it really affecting your supplemental and concentric funding.
Yeah, so I, I mean, I would just assume, if we're at, if we wanted to add a hundred students, I would, I would want you to do the analysis of, what's a hundred students at our current seventy-five percent, is it, Superintendent, unduplicated count?
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
We had, are we at seventy-five percent, unduplicated pupils?
Yes, we do.
Uh, in tot- in total, yes.
Total.
To be exact, is seven, seventy-four point nine. To be exact, is seven, seventy-four point nine.
Yeah. So, so that's, that, you know, that's the kind of assumption that maybe the calculator doesn't know. But what if we added seventy-five unduplicated and twenty-five non-unduplicated? And they were in classrooms that had the space, we didn't have to hire? What, you know, what, what additional revenue would that bring in to cut into that deficit?
Actually, when I do the FICMA calculator, the way that I enter it, I actually go into the grade nine to twelve and manually increase the ADA by one twenty-five. And at the same time, because I'm getting more ADA, I increase the enrollment by one thirty-two. And then the unduplicated count, I still stay at seventy-five percent, and that got increased. So somehow, the increase, the total of the LCFF increased funding, it come to five hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. But again, I will look into further to answer your question to see why, why it seems like it's not one twenty-five ADA times the eight thousand dollars ADA funding per ADA. It seems like it should be more than, way more than enough to cover the five hundred fifty-two thousand.
Yeah.
I understand your question, I do.
Right, yeah. And I think I even sent you an email or the, I read an article in the paper this week saying, talking about the may revise and saying, on average, the California per pupil average is ninety-six hundred across the state. And I don't know how they figured that out. And that was all grade spans and all unduplicated, mixed up with all non, so. But yeah, it just seemed that forty-four hundred was somehow under accounting. But all right, let's try to figure that out.
And then the fund balance, but on the multi-year, you still seeing, even though we are in deficit spending, we're still able to meet the four percent required reserve in fourteen fifteen and fifteen sixteen and sixteen seventeen. So I'm not going to ask the board to approve the third interim.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, other questions on the third interim? Do we have any public comment on the third interim presentation? It's available online? Oh, it is, yes, isn't it, Ms. Sue? It's online, it's an attachment to the agenda item?
What we're looking at on our screens, if you ever wonder why we're looking at the computers.
Yes, we're not, we're not ignoring, we're looking at the.
We're not watching the Warriors score at all.
Don't tell me, don't tell me, I am recording. Mr. Carver?
Good evening, President Affeld, members of the board. My name is Brian Carver. The, this dealing with the budget and trying to get that right is one of the most difficult things that, one of the, the top of the list of the thankless tasks that this board gets charged with. When we were here two weeks ago, if I'd had more time, I wanted to say something about that, how appreciative I am that there are five people who are willing to spend every other Wednesday night dealing with these kinds of issues. It's complex, it's difficult choices where often both of your options are bad or you have a set of three bad options. And so, and I don't know for sure, you know, what all the right moves would be to get this back in the right direction. But one thing I wanted to ask is, there were a lot of members of the public here last time. And when they see reports like this, they haven't had the benefit of something like Board Member Dice's long tenure on this board or something like that, who can, you know, see these acronyms and understand it, you know, just right off. It'd be great to get a glossary with this document. Or even just a footnote that said, what assumptions is the LCCF number based on? What enrollment number? You know, that's the question that Board Member Miriam asked last time, that I was sitting out in the audience with that same question, wondering what's the number that this is based on. And so just a little more textual support would, I think, aid in the public's understanding anyway of what you're going through and what you're trying to sort out. But on the, I didn't think I had this comment, but when you had the discussion of potentially adding new students, five years ago, when my daughter started kindergarten, we tried having four kindergarten classes instead of the three. And we filled them up. And I remember going to a presentation at the time where the board was presented material saying that actually, the cost of a kindergarten teacher is such that you make money on a fully enrolled kindergarten class, even if you have to hire new staff, right? And so, and so they tried it. They then decided to move the sixth through eighth grade over to Anna Yates, and there wasn't room to continue that experiment. But we had no trouble adding a fourth kindergarten class. And in a side conversation, our principal thought we might even be able to add five if we, if the board chose to go that direction, right? So that's something I think you could think about, is building from the bottom up over a period of years. You might be able to get the hundred and twenty, or however many it is that you need to start writing the finances. But I think I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you. And just to clarify, your side conversation with the principal, Mr. Cart, was back then or currently, recently? Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public on this item? Okay, thank you, Ms. Sue.